Recording in progress.
All right, good evening. We'll call to order the Planning Commission meeting for the City of St. Joseph, Monday, April tenth, two thousand twenty-three. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment on the agenda? We don't have any? All right. The review of the agenda and adoption? We've got a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So approved. We have in front of us the meeting minutes for February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We did not have a March meeting.
I'll move.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any changes or corrections that anybody had? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Item number six on the agenda, we have a public hearing for a conditional use permit for Gooden Outdoor Storage.
Yes, good evening, Planning Commission members. For your consideration, this evening is a request for a conditional use permit. This conditional use permit has been submitted by Gooden Company. Right now, Gooden is the applicant. CLC is technically still the owner, but that will be changing shortly. This conditional use permit is for outdoor storage on Lot One, Block One of Northland Business Center, Third Edition. The site is located right to the north of the Tropic site and then to the east of Twenty-First Avenue Northeast. The property is zoned Iowa Light Industrial, and outdoor storage is a permitted accessory use through the conditional use permit. Gooden is going through site plan review right now on the property. So if the CUP is recommended for approval and granted by the council, they'll be contingent on the site plan and then the building permit approvals. The proposal is essentially a three-acre storage yard area. In addition to the storage yard area, they'll be constructing a approximately two-hundred-thousand-square-foot building. The storage yard area will be enclosed with an eight-foot slotted chain-link fence with shrubbery and trees planted on the exterior of the fencing. The storage area is meant to store PVC piping, trailers, and related accessory equipment to the principal use. Our subdivision code does require that fence or wall used for screening also entail planting materials on the exterior of the fence, so the applicant has provided that. As per the CUP, staff is also recommending that any plants that may die after the initial planting, that those plants are replaced within that same or the next growing season. And then any future expansion or increase to the storage yard shall require amendment to the CUP. So staff has prepared a finding of fact and resolution. The city code does require Planning Commission to conduct a public hearing and for the council to adopt the finding of fact, and that is in the packet. And then also, part of this request, there's a couple other items. Item seven A is related to the storage yard surfacing, so we have included the proposed storage yard surfacing within the resolution that's in the packet. Essentially, the applicant is proposing to surface the storage yard area with dust-free bituminous millings, which is essentially recycled asphalt. So our ordinance does provide some flexibility. If concrete or bituminous surfacing is not used, that a comparable substitute shall be approved by the city. So with that, for the conditional use permit, we would request that the public hearing be opened, and then two actions would be requested of the Planning Commission. That would be the action on the resolution and then also on the storage yard surfacing. And then the third item will highlight that after the CUP, and that is in regards to proof of parking request for the minimum parking standards. So can be happy to answer questions.
What is, sorry, what is the approximate area of the parcel, if I'm not mistaken? It was around fifteen acres?
About fifteen acres or so.
Okay.
I should mention that the applicants are here this evening as well.
And then, as far as parking, it looks like you have enough spots for three hundred, but do not need those. Is that correct?
So they do have enough, so they are proposing to do seventy-some parking spots because essentially the use is mostly warehousing, and they don't have a lot of traffic coming to and from the site. That's like a retail-type of traffic, so that parking would be essentially for their workers and employees. But should they need to expand, they have plenty of ability to do that for that.
Can I ask, how many do you guys plan to employ there? Is that possible to ask? Oh, yeah, just in that facility in specific. Okay, thank you.
Is the expansion parking there to be paved, or is it going to be the same, the same surface as the storage?
So the parking areas will all be paved? Yeah, yeah, yep. So should they need to expand that parking, those will all be intended to be paved along with the loading docks. The only surfacing deviation for tonight's consideration is just the storage yard area, which is the three acres in the rear of the property.
Just for clarification, they're proposing to pave the seventy-some parking spots, and the remainder would be turf at this time. Should they need to expand it, they would be paving the additional parking?
Correct.
Okay. I guess that was, that was from the site plans that were in the packet, so, okay. I guess, does the applicant wish to speak or have anything that they want to say at this point before we open the public hearing? No? All right, with that, we will open the public hearing pertaining to the conditional use permit. Is there anybody here wishing to speak regarding the permit? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion among the commission. I guess I don't see any issues. I would make a motion to approve the resolution based on the findings of fact that are included in our packet. Do we need to read those for the record, or?
No, no.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion or anything? All those in favor?
Aye.
Resolution is approved.
And then I'll move for the motion on the proof of parking request.
Well, the storage yard surfacing, the parking is separate. Oh, no, that was included in the resolution. Sorry.
Yeah, if we could just get one separate motion on the surface yard storaging as well with the proposal.
I will make a motion to approve the recycled bituminous or the surfacing for the parking. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Did you want to do then the motion for the parking too? I'll move, I'll move for that one for proof of parking.
I'll second. We have a motion and second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So that, looks like that takes care of six and seven on the agenda, so we're on number eight. The public hearing for a zoning amendment for a wedding or event venue in a rural residential district.
Yes, thank you. Also for consideration this evening, staff have received a amendment to, a proposed amendment to amend the zoning within the rural residential district. The amendment is to allow a wedding or event venue within a rural residential area. Some of you may recall that the Planning Commission did discuss this amendment numerous times in two thousand twenty-two. Eventually, at the April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two meeting, a public hearing was conducted with Planning Commission voting five-two to deny the proposed amendment. The major citing for the denial by the commission was that the use was not compatible with the intent and character of the rural residential district. The applicant does have the right to come back after a year of the request, the original request, and the council last year at their May meeting also denied the request three-two. So the proposal is to submit, or was submitted by Ken Bellicot and Kristen Farrell, and that proposal is to, again, allow a wedding and event venue as a conditional use within the rural residential district. There are two drafts that are in the packet. One is the draft that the applicant is requesting. The applicant's request includes adding the use just as a conditional use with no other conditions or stipulations. Staff is recommending that if a ordinance amendment was supported to allow this use, that there should be additional stipulations and conditions added to the request and added to the ordinance itself. A conditional use permit does have the ability, once it comes forward, for the commission to add reasonable conditions to that use, but staff sees that some of those conditions that could be added may not sufficiently cover the concerns that staff may have for allowing the use in the rural residential district. Some of these concerns, and I'll go through just that drafted ordinance that staff has prepared, and some of those conditions include inserting a clear definition for the use. One, we have to clearly define what is a wedding and event venue, and we believe we arrived at as close of definition as, as we can. We want to make this as black and white as possible, and we don't want to allow for any gray within the code. We also added a use that requires a residential component to the rural residential amendment. This is a carryover, and a lot of these are carryovers from last year and what was recommended initially. So that includes the language that states that the facility should be located on the same parcel as the owner's residence. This helps ensure that the use and the character remains somewhat residential in nature. And standalone event facilities that do not have a residential component may be more conducive to the other districts like the B-two highway commercial district. We also have language tied to the use being located off what's called a minor arterial street. So another concern of staff's was, we don't want to allow the use in our rural residential areas where we may have smaller lot sizes, like five-acre lots, or we may have cul-de-sac neighborhoods, a higher density. We don't feel that the use is appropriate in those areas. So we are including language in the draft that requires that the use is located off a minor arterial street. The minor arterial street is meant to service vehicle trips in and out of the regional area, and considering what type of use this is, being a special event facility, it's really meant to attract vehicle trips from in and out of the region. So we feel that that location should be located off the minor arterial streetways. Similar to how like a B-two commercial highway district is, where they're located off minor arterial streets like County Roads, like One Thirty-three or Highway Seventy-five, things of that nature. We also put in minimum acreage requirements. Now, we'll admit that there's no magical number, per se, for the minimum acreage requirements, but what this is really meant to do, again, is we don't want the use to be in an area where we have five, ten-acre lots, higher densities. Forty acres eliminates a lot of the, a lot of property in the rural residential from, from having the use. We also have increased setbacks. Again, there's not a magical number for what that appropriate setback distance may be, but the minimum setback within the rural residential district, we feel, is not sufficient. So what we've included on there is a seventy-five-foot setback for the event facility itself, not necessarily other accessory buildings that may be not used as a event facility. So it's mainly, mostly meant for the principal use, the principal event venue, to have that increased setback, so there's some buffering. We also have a requirement for connection to utilities, requiring the use to be connected to water and sewer. This also prohibits, or in a way restricts, the use from populating throughout the rural residential district. You know, there's various things, whether it's tied to fire protection or other things. We have inserted language, and we've had legal review, our draft, our staff draft. And legal also has suggested that another option, if utilities aren't required at time of permit, that you could look at requiring a memorandum of understanding, which is executed as part of that CUP. So if a CUP, if the language gets amended to allow the use as a conditional use, then when they come in, applicant for that conditional use, the commission and the council would have the flexibility to execute a memorandum of understanding at the time of the CUP, stating when they need to connect to services if they are not connecting at the time of building permit. We also have minimum screening requirements and protection from noise impacts. That just helps contain the use and protect adjacent properties through required screening. Also, all off-street parking requirements need to be met. This helps prevent excess parking on grass areas, which we wouldn't allow, and also contains the parking to a defined area within the site. And that parking, again, has to meet our requirements of a paved surfacing, and then also screening, so we don't have issues with like car headlights onto adjacent properties. The one other item I didn't mention for the residential component is staff's kind of gone back and forth on that one. I wouldn't say we're a hundred percent backing or stating that that needs to be included, but is an important one to consider, given the intent of the rural residential district and trying to maintain the intent of that district and its standards. So with that, and I would, I would share my screen so everyone else could see this, but I apologize, my computer's froze up right now, so cannot do that, but there are packets out there and available. So with that, though, I'd be happy to answer questions. Again, we have had legal review this in regards to the staff draft and those conditions. The Planning Commission can recommend either applicant's proposed draft, staff's draft, deny both, add other language to the drafted ordinance. It's really, you know, up to the commission on what you want to recommend. So with that, I know the applicant is here this evening, so otherwise, I'd be happy to answer questions and open up the public hearing.
One question I have is we, this is something that we had discussed last year. Is there anything in the application that has changed from last year as far as the, I guess, the vision for this particular parcel or anything like that that has changed?
Not to my understanding.
No? Okay.
So you're saying most of the changes are coming with the ordinance itself, correct? Did you make major changes in that ordinance, those spots that you just highlighted?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, so on, I think it's page forty-six of the packet, where staff has prepared those minimum requirements. Again, those requirements and that language is meant to severely restrict and prohibit the use within the rural residential district. After looking at these different stipulations, we feel that there's only a handful, and by handful, I mean maybe on one hand, the properties that could come forward and pursue this use in the district.
And you're talking just wedding venue itself, correct?
Yeah, yep.
Is this, is this an event center, wedding and, what you're talking about is both a wedding and event center, correct?
Yep, so we're defining it as a special event facility. So if you look within the packet, so a facility, this is how we've defined it. A facility that's designed to house a celebration, ceremony, wedding, reception, corporate function, or similar activity for the benefit of someone other than the property owner that takes place on a periodic basis and involves the gathering of individuals for the common purpose of attending a special event. Special event facilities are subject to a use agreement between a private group or individual and the facility and property owner. So we have run, again, that definition, and then what staff is recommending with legal for input and tweaked as according.
How do we handle alcohol beverages?
So that would be handling it through a licensing, similar to any off-sale or on-sale permits. So it'd follow the same process.
So this, this, this amendment that we're talking about to the ordinance, would, we can specify whether there's alcohol or no alcohol in this, and that's subject to licensure later?
Yeah, it'd be subject to the standard licensing for, for that. If they wish to have and serve alcohol onsite, then they'd have to obtain the proper permits and license.
Food, do we determine whether the food is going to be prepared onsite in the kitchen or is it catered in?
No, we don't determine that.
We don't determine that?
No.
Question on the transportation side of things. You said it has to be, or one of the proposed statements in the ordinances on minor arterial. Looking at the plans currently, it's not, but future, well, it was always planned to be a minor arterial in the twenty thirty-five traffic forecast?
Correct, yeah. So Jade Road is intended to service in and out of the region. It's a minor arterial street, yep.
And when was that transportation plan last updated? I'm guessing?
So the, in regards to the roadways, two thousand thirteen, and then in regards to the trails and the sidewalks, we just amended that, was it last year, I think, maybe?
I think so. Okay.
And then, as far as like the acreage, you know, you say there's no minimum, or what is the minimum, or forty to limit some of the spots? With this arterial street, wouldn't it also pretty much limit the majority of the rural residential just in general?
Correct, yeah. So in combination with the acreage requirements, the arterial street setbacks and other standards that we put in, really, the goal of that, to put those additional conditions in, was to restrict and limit where this use could go. We don't feel this use is appropriate in a vast majority, but there's parcels that may make sense for, for the use if they're off those, you know, streets and stuff.
What I'm saying is if they're off that streets, I know you say forty acres, but that's not the magical number. Why do you have to put a acreage on it just in general if you're having conditional use for it? You know what I'm saying? So, I mean, if you're, if you're arterial streets, also dictate a lot of those other rural residenials being disqualified already for that, and the goal is still to expand the city outward, right? It also limits it, so personally, I don't know if you need an acreage, per se. I see what you're saying. You want to limit it to four or five lots. We had this talk last year, you know, about there's only so many lots, but don't get hung up, I guess, on the acreage of every single lot, but more or less, what's a conditional use going to be in a wedding or an event center, right?
Yeah, yep. The biggest thing to recall for that is, within the CUP, the commission and the council can put reasonable conditions, but if, if you didn't have an acreage requirement at the time of a CUP, you couldn't state that, oh, well, now we may feel that fifteen acres is too small, so we're going to restrict that, you know, so we're trying to put it in the ordinance upfront. Not to say, again, that there's a magical number, that the forty acres.
Here's my question for you. What's, what's considered reasonable?
So it has to be like site-specific, so we couldn't necessarily dictate that, okay, now we want a minimum acreage on there. And we feel that that, yep, so like.
Ken and Kristen, their lot's what, fifty-nine, fifty-nine acres, I think it is, right? But you're limiting it to forty, but then you have someone else that comes in that says, I have fifteen acres. Again, what's considered reasonable if that person who comes in with fifteen acres says now they want to do it, and we say, well, no, we're going to make it forty now. I just, I get hung up on, it has to be a specific acreage. That's what I get hung up on.
Yeah.
That's just me.
Yep. Yeah, think about reasonable as, like, if they come in and there were requiring screening requirements, you know, wouldn't it be reasonable to ask them to build like a, you know, a ten-foot brick, you know, fence or something like that? You know, there'd be additional stipulations that we'd have to look at, and of course, legal would weigh in on, on some of that as well before anything is adopted.
We had talked about, last time too, about sprinkler and some code-type stuff that would have to be considered. Is that affected in this type of property?
Yeah, so you may have to follow all the current building codes, right?
Correct, yeah. Building code and permits, and that would all have to be followed.
I think the fire spread is based on occupancy by.
Correct.
So then, would, would you, would you want to have something like that stipulated in this, or it doesn't?
No, so they would have to follow the building code regardless. Yeah, we wouldn't have to state that within the ordinance. Anyone that comes in for a permit would have to be held to those state standards and that, that we would apply.
Again, you also have increased setbacks, which is good. When you talk about minimum screening requirements for protection from noise, what are the minimum requirements?
Essentially, a fence around the perimeter, and then the fence needs to be broken up with vegetation, including shrubbery and trees, similar to the conditional use permit request that we had earlier this evening.
What about hours of operation? You know, if we're going to have events with music, with bands, whatever, hours of operation for noise for the residents that do live in the area? And then I'm going to go back again, that's just the first question, and then the other one is, again, the activities, the wedding receptions. I know we said periodic, but what happens when someone says, I want to start doing a regular thing every Wednesday night, or every Thursday night, or Friday night? And they want to have a band coming in, and then they're going to have music, and they're going to have food, and they're going to have alcohol, and how is that handled compared to, we're just going to do a wedding on the weekends or a corporate event during the week or something like that?
So at the time of a CUP, if the ordinance were adopted and the use were allowed through a CUP, at the time that they come in for a CUP, the commission and the council can restrict the hours and also restrict the quantity of days that they could conduct the use.
Could that be done in the ordinance itself, or does it have to be done with the CUP?
With the CUP.
And that's days of operation too, because that was another concern I has, is your, your lot is right adjacent to a school. So now you have someone that comes in, and I want to get married on a Wednesday at twelve o'clock. I might not get too crazy, but there's concerns, and I know we talked about the school and everything else there.
Three o'clock on a Wednesday.
Right, right, you know, but, but you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Is it also, not just hours of operation, but days?
Correct. Yep, you can do this per the CUP.
And those kind of restrictions fall under the reasonable?
Yeah, yep.
There, there's not a better way to define periodic?
Right.
Yeah.
I guess that's kind of where it comes down to, right?
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was tough. The, the definition may not be perfect, but we feel it's as close as we can get to make it more black and white. But some of that would be flushed out if. But some of that would be flushed out if ordinance were adopted, you know, as part of the CUP process.
Okay. Well, with that, I think we should probably open the public hearing for comment. If anybody here would like to speak, please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Corey Ellert, just resident here in St. Joseph. I'm a little bit new to this, I was watching it last year, and I just would recommend that the city, you know, you just, sometimes you can't put a square peg in a round hole, and we have these ordinances in place. Nate, I appreciate the enthusiasm and the effort that you guys have put forth to try to make something work. I, I think their business would be great in this community, but it has to be in the right spot. I, my Kevin, my partner and I met with the city three times, I think, Nate, you were part of that. We looked at developing this property, we wanted to buy it. We wanted to do a low-density residential development. Currently, it's, that is what it's zoned, low-density residential development. That isn't the comprehensive plan, it's been in there in twenty-five, thirty years. We brought forth a plan to, to develop that parcel property with twelve, ten to twelve homes on it, which we consider low-density residential, fitting the current zoning requirements and those things. We met a ton, I mean, it was a showstopper. The city engineer put forth a plan that hosted one hundred and five residential homes. He required us to have city water and city services as part of that plan. And it was made very clear to us, and Nate can attest to this, that the city's vision for that property was high-density residential. We pushed forward one more meeting and some additional costs and engineering in the proposal, and it again was met with a ton of resistance from the city engineer and the city staff at that time. They, it was, the conclusion was drawn that the plan for that, even though it's currently zoned low-density residential, it was to be a high-density residential parcel property. That probably doesn't make any of the residents here feel any better, but it was clear to us that that was the long-term vision for the city. And I couldn't debate, I mean, it's, we only have a limited amount of, you know, area in the city of St. Joseph, so if that's what they saw, that's what they saw. And that, if that's their vision. I will tell you that it's going to be very difficult to get our city sewer there. We were encouraged that, or told that we would have to have city services there regardless of the density. The site is not conducive to one hundred and five homes, not in our model anyway. But even with the twelve homes that we were thinking about doing, we had to have city services. That has to come from Woodcrest, that's not going to be an easy task. So I do think that if you guys do flex and allow them to do it, you have to honor that requo, that requirement of city water and city sewer. That's going to be on the onus of the development. So just, I hesitate and caution you to have any interim until city services are to the property, some of those things. I just want to make sure that the same, that same standard is met in this development as it would have been for anybody else, rural residential or high-density residential. The acreage, you know, a member hazen, I, I think you're spot on there. I, I just don't know that there's a, there's the right number. I think the conditional use permit and the conditional use process is a good process. Now, you guys will be able to vet that during those steps as well. I just, I just don't see that there's anything gained by having a forty-acre minimum requirement. If we have a, a site meets all the other requirements and it's on twelve and a half beautiful acres, maybe that's, that's the perfect site, and, and to limit that by saying forty's the number, I, I just don't know that you're making your job any easier or anything. I, one of the beauties of a small city is being able to flex and have those abilities and make those decisions to accommodate a great business in our community. So putting those limitations and forty-acre requirements, that's a big requirement. I, I think is just going to cause trouble down the road, so just my thoughts on, on that. But I, I want to emphasize, I would ask that, you know, you guys maybe asked for the city engineer's opinion today is, and I'd, I'd be very curious to understand why that would have changed from high-density residential to one business being accommodated on sixty acres. That is not a good use of that six-acre parcel at all, so.
How long ago was that, Corey? How long ago was that?
Probably twenty twenty, would you say, a year and a half, two years ago maybe at the most, twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, it was kind of right around the time, I think it was coming on or a little bit after that, I think. About twenty twenty or so, I think, yeah.
To the extent that we actually had the family members that were selling the property, they supported our, our, our plan. We met with the city staff, city administrator at the time, city engineer, and, and the family that wanted to sell it, they supported it. They've always felt, the original owner up there always wanted to, you know, wanted to keep it and preserve the woods, and I love that piece of what you guys are doing, the nature, natural setting, and, and we were too. So they, they supported that, so. So I would say, yeah, two to three years ago, three's pushing it, year and a half to two and a half.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak at this time?
Hi, Ken Velco, I'm the owner of the property. So I can appreciate the process that we've come to. It's been not an easy one, I think Randy alluded to that last year in your comments. But what we've done is work in concert with the city to try and figure out what would be best. And I understand we are here to vote on a broader topic of the impacted properties by the CUP, but much of the questions come back to this specific property because we're the ones bringing it forward. In speaking with the Hovis, they were supportive as well of our vision of maintaining the property as it sits, just shy of sixty acres of rolling oak trees. We have bids on water and sewer, and it's not a, it's not a significant barrier because we're not looking at tearing up the entire sixty acres or disturbing the sixty acres to bring it in and place roads and place homes and everything else. And I think that vision is great from a development standpoint, but it hurts from a natural standpoint. That property is, and I think you could probably attest, would be difficult at best to develop into homes, given the wetlands and the bedrock and everything else. And left alone to be in its entirety is probably best suited from a conservation standpoint. The beauty of the location is there's an old gravel pit onsite that affords already, I would say, on average, twelve-foot berms around where this event center, what we consider a wedding site to be. It's already naturally protected from sound and light pollution. It's already protected from barriers of, you know, if, if somebody wants to drive by and see what's there, you're not even going to see it from the road. It's going to be held in its natural state. Specific to alcohol and food concerns, we are not going to be providing any of that personally, it's partnerships with businesses. We will leave it to those who do that best with catering and providing whatever services anybody wants to have onsite. We are not intending to be another banned location. It's not, I think there was a reference to the Delwin Ballroom last year. That's not this. This is more akin to what's already allowed in this condition use permit, which is a place of worship. It is not a place of worship, but it is most akin to that by way of traffic would be evenings, weekends, so opposite of what that road already sees. You're really looking at utilizing this property, what we believe in its natural best intent, and in a manner that is less disruptive on that road than we believe a hundred homes would have been. We've seen that site plan of a hundred and five homes. That would completely destroy something beautiful that's out there. And now you have two hundred cars daily going through there or more, making individual trips. Where here, we're talking about Friday nights, Saturdays, maybe the occasional Thursday night. I mean, I don't know that a Wednesday afternoon wedding is going to happen anywhere besides a courthouse, but, you know, you, you can't predict the future on it, much like we can't predict the future when we're doing these plannings with the city to say, what is this site best going to be suited at as in the future? Or how is this rural residential zoning going to be applied in the future? I believe that rural residential, and it shows up there now, allows for some moderate business use within large plots of land, and it's mostly about protecting the plots of land in their natural state versus completely rezoning into a high-density housing development. I think that would be wildly detrimental. We're just really trying to look at how to respectfully put an operational business in without disturbing the land that's there and working with the city to say, yeah, we, we agree side by side with most of what's being put out here. And I think we can work together to continue to build that for the community.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak at this time?
Hey, good evening, Randy Schmitz, Rolling Ridge Wedding and Event Center. Just a couple, couple of things I want to bring up. Presentation, the proposal for that property, sounds amazing, all wedding venues do, and has an allure to it. Big concern that I have on my property about a rural residential property within the city of St. Joseph, so has the potential to be affected one way or another, depending upon what, what's being proposed with minimum acreage and the conditions of the use of the property, et cetera. But one of the big things that I'm more concerned about is just the specificity for one specific business to allow this use in a rural residential area. There's lots of other businesses that are similar to it. It's a large chunk of property to take off the tax rolls in terms of the commercial use that it's actually going to be used for. Our, our businesses is located within a commercial district, and we're paying a significant amount of taxes for that. So if this is being allowed to be a residence that also operates a pretty large business out of it, that should be taken into consideration in terms of what tax dollars or expenses are being required to be covered by other, you know, residents within the city of St. Joseph and/or businesses. And it's the current use, it's the current business owner, we've seen a number of these start and stop around the state. So once the use is allowed, it's, it's permanent with how the ordinance amendment is written or suggested to be written in the future. So it's not just the specific property, it's going to be everybody that's adjoining rural residential properties as well as the rural residential areas as well. So I, I think that's it, but I'm here if you have any questions about wedding, wedding-related businesses. I know like you guys talked about the catering and the beverages and stuff, all of our stuff is catered as well, but tax dollars from food and beverage revenue and stuff do not stay within the city. So all of that stuff also goes outside of the community with this type of business. That is, you know, all I have to share, other than conditions, like conditional use permit part, difficult to enforce also because weddings happen in evenings and weekends. They do happen every day of the week also, I can contest to that, because we've celebrated them at Rolling Ridge every day of the week, including Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is anybody else wishing to speak at this point? I guess not seeing anybody else, I will at this time close the public hearing and open it up for discussion among the, the commission.
So nothing, like you had said, has changed from my decision last time. Nate, you had put in the new language here that it would be the owner's primary residence, but from the last meeting we had, they were not, that was one of the things that they didn't agree to. So I kind of feel like there was a comment just now saying, we agree to most of these things. So, you know, we go through, we put this type of ordinance in place, our conditional use permit, and then where do, where does that come into play? Well, now there's an argument and to fight that, and that's where kind of some of the conversations were in the beginning. This is what it's going to be. That's what it has to be. It's, I agree, talking about the size of the property, it, you know, we keep picking on the size of the property, more so looking at its location. The school is right there, I know that, you know, along with the proposed hundred eight, hundred home development, but further down, we have the, the park, and you, you know, we looked at that earlier. You know, what is our use, what is our future intended use for that area? And it just feels like we're throwing in this event venue center that on weekends, it's just, I mean, you know, it could happen in two years and all of a sudden we have homes moving out there. Further development, would we be making a mistake by prematurely setting that off in that area?
I guess I'd kind of piggyback on with that too. Rural residential is supposed to be low-density housing, as Corey pointed out. And this is the first I heard that they wanted to do a high-density housing there. It's my opinion that rural residential is supposed to be low-density housing. That's what it's designed to do, is to maintain the rural character of our city, right? We do have a lovely city, it's a beautiful place, and I think we want to maintain that rural environment and utilizing that, putting in this kind of event center or this kind of language into the amendment or making this, this proposal, I think just kind of takes away from the original intent of the rural residential, low-density housing, maintain that agriculture and that, that rural feel.
I think, Nate, you even alluded to the fact that, I mean, the city's got some, has, there's obviously some hesitation on the city's apart, part to allow this use in the rural residential as evidenced by the desire to put limitations on it as far as where it can be with regards to roadways, lot size, things like that. I guess it just goes back to, you know, our findings last year that the proposed use is just not consistent with the rural residential district. Certainly, if the primary residence portion is removed, I, I can't see how we can even do that. I mean, I don't know how you could even put this use in there if you're going to remove the residential portion from the requirements. And it would be an accessory use, and in my understanding is accessory use has come after the primary residence as well, or concurrently, obviously. I know I've personally dealt with issues with, you know, an accessory building existing on a parcel and not having a permanent, or not having a residence as a primary use and the headaches that that can cause. I think that, that residential component is certainly necessary, and I, I guess I still, I mean, with nothing having changed, I, I love the vision for the property, I think, you know, I mean, I love the idea of the trails and the, I mean, it is a beautiful parcel of land with some great features. However, I just don't think that a special event center is an appropriate use in a rural residential district. I don't think it's consistent with the intent of the resident, rural residential zoning district. I guess my opinion on that hasn't changed in a year, and with nothing new in the application, I'm struggling.
What does it take to change that parcel of just rural residential to commercial?
So from a staff perspective, we'd actually have more concern if a rezone were to occur, because if we rezone the property to like B two highway commercial, then we're opening up that property to a host of other more noxious potential issues. To a host of other more noxious, um, potential issues from gas stations to car washes. To whatever is allowed in the B two district. Um, we did discuss, uh, last year after the action by the council, um, the option to do a P U D. Um, that was not pursued.
Yeah, that was my next question.
Yep, yep, so, um, the applicant does have the right to come back, you know, in a year to request the the amendment and and that's why we're here.
So, that was one of the big questions I had for the two of you is. My biggest concern last year when I was on the council is changing this whole thing opens up a can of worms for all residential areas. Your vision's great, business is great, the PUD or the, you know, planned unit development option, is there a reason you didn't explore that more, or did you? Yeah, that would be great, that's that's a big question I had.
Yeah, absolutely, so one, in working in concert with, um, pretty much all staff, um, I felt like it was all staff. Uh, we were working through a lot of different options and, uh, one, doing the conditional use permit. Still allowed us to be taxed commercially, so we would still be putting in our dollars that way, it would not get any special tax treatment. Going in through the planned unit development, um, was not a. In in sitting in it, it it wasn't necessarily a recommended process because. And and I'm going to paraphrase conversations that I've had with staff and and I'm gonna do my best to just. Put it out there transparent, because not all of it was in our favor, uh, with it. Rezoning to commercial was essentially off the table, because we wouldn't want anything to be placed there in the future anyway. We own the property, it's not gonna have massive development, the trees aren't coming down on it essentially. Um, the P U D was initially brought forth. By the previous administrator, and the initial conversation was over fifty percent of the acreage. Would be requested by the city, which I don't think there's a magic number. But in my conversations with other, uh, people who have developed land. If you, let's say hypothetically, developed a hundred acres, you may hand over five to ten acres. Of green space in a P U D, and the request when it came through was everything west of the stream. Which kind of cuts the property in half going west, so we had ballparked. Uh, with Randy, that was almost thirty-three acres, just as a guess, so it really was a. It was a non-starter to give up over fifty percent of the property outside of control. When that property is intended to go into land conservation trust anyway. And have that protected in perpetuity to stay where it was. We didn't necessarily need the city to say they were gonna do that, and then in speaking with country manner. They didn't want to allow their trail system to be used to access that plot of land back there. Which would be inhibitive to their property, wildly inhibited to their property, to have more traffic going through on their trails. Just to access that, what I could only imagine would end up being some type of park space accessible to the public. And we're gonna kinda do it anyway, right, having the trail system and bringing that vision, uh, closer to light.
Is is he right, where the sense where they will get taxed commercially in the C U P, if that's how it's?
Um, so I'm just gonna read what the, um, is included in the packet, so. Staff reached out, um, cause we knew that was a question, um, that came up, um, last year and that, so. We reached out to the Stearns County Assessor with the question of, how does the assessor's office handle a use that has an event venue along with a residential use? Um, you know, specifically like if an old barn is converted or if a new event facility is built in a rural residential zoned area. Uh, their response was, we Stearns County split the classification based on what is being used commercially. Most likely, the barn or the event area would be classified as commercial, and the rest would remain as residential or agricultural. Uh, no value would change unless, for instance, if a barn was remodeled or fixed up, so that's their response, if you can.
And then I got, I got one more question for you, Ken, if if approved and you do go through, what is your projection of building and how long would it take you?
Uh, boy, that's anybody's guess, um. Our intent is to start as soon as possible, um, but when you're looking at a. Four to five million dollar building going up from the ground up, there's a lot of planning that goes ahead of that from an architectural standpoint. Um, the, just simply bringing services out there, um. Is going to take its own set of time, I mean, realistically, we're ready to go when. When and if the city says that, yeah, we believe that this could be a good partnership, uh, with this plot of land. Um, and where it is and with with the way the city wants to grow.
Yeah, my more of us, the question is, because if you're up and ready to go, and then sewer and water isn't hooked up. And he said you could use a, what was the term, they could use a moran- or memorandum, right?
Morandum of understanding.
You know, I'd prefer to not have that first, right, I'd prefer to have city and water hooked up. As you're, and then.
As as would we, I mean, we're we're in agreeance with that, that city and city water is preferable. The conversations that went back and forth with this, and and again, I'm gonna do my best to recreate those conversations. What we discussed within that was, initially, if you're gonna develop this lot into a hundred and five homes or twelve homes. The city and water sewer has to be run through the whole property. In speaking with, uh, the city engineer and staff. What could potentially happen is we just simply bring service to the venue, right? In in the most direct manner possible, right, so you, uh, we are approximately three hundred feet. Uh, from the, um, from the Kennedy hookup, we'll call it, right there. Um, and I believe, um, our intent in discussion is to try and run it on the east side of the road. Because that's all open space, um, if we ran it on the west side of Jade Road, it would actually go across Commissioner Mick's property. And then down to our property to then go back to the venue, which would be added cost to us to go on the east side. Because then we would have to bore under the road to get it over, but again, it's about minimal disruption to the natural screening that's already there. And the natural scape that's there, and then if the city develops further down the road, it's already in the green space that it should be run through. So, what we've come up with is approximately nine hundred feet of water and sewer is what it would take. Because the venue would sit over three hundred feet back from the road. We have a site plan that generally puts it almost six hundred feet back, but it would be over three hundred feet from the road. So, getting that water sewer out there is preferable to us as well, it just depends on whether the city says. Okay, we have to run it all twelve hundred feet of your road frontage and three hundred feet to get it there and six hundred feet back. Now you're looking at a cost prohibitive scenario where we may say, okay, well, well-inseptic. Will suffice from our operations standpoint, and then when somebody develops further down. Because it it'll happen eventually, then we hook up to it, and that would be the understanding. But it is our primary goal to get water and sewer to the venue and to use that. It's not our intent to dodge that, it's our intent to figure it out with staff, how that's feasible. Because almost two thousand feet of water and sewer is not generally feasible.
Thank you. Because, you know, my only other thing, and I don't have any other for you, Ken, but I I'm with you where it seems like there's too much in there. And if you put too much in there, you're limiting yourself on the ordinance, you know, so preferably it, you know. A doesn't bother me the sep- or this minimum, minimum acreage doesn't bother me, but I would like. You know, B, D, E, F, G possibly in there too, those are my thoughts and my.
I know it was mentioned that it's, that the use is similar to a place of worship, and I don't disagree. Except for the fact that a place of worship draws your local residents to it and your local community. Whereas the event center, you know, that it's been mentioned by the city that it's to bring outside in. Um, so, in that respect, there is some differences, um, so I I mean. I I I do see, you know, obviously, the the use of the special event center is similar to a place of worship. Um, I guess I'm s- I am still really struggling with. With the intent of the rural residential district to be maintaining, um, very low residential development for those persons desiring a rural lifestyle. Um, to bring business and commercial development into that is is a is a tough one for me to justify.
I agree. In general, I don't have a problem with it, as, you know, I think the plan is good, but I, and it's just the location of it, I'm not sure it's. The right spot for it, I mean, if all of the conditions were met. Is there any certain condition you aren't planning on meeting in in what the city has laid out in the proposed ordinance? Um, the discussion with, uh, staff on the residence piece, we do intend to have something there. That is similar of of. The difficulty with the primary residence and this is it comes in and, um, again, I'm I'm trying to regurgitate conversation with staff. But the difficulty is what's considered the primary building, when does what go up first and how does it actually get going? Um, the house that was there was, um. It it wasn't even an eyesore, it was an asbestos raccoon filled. It was a, it was horrible, right, so we had to take that down, um, otherwise there was a primary residence sitting there. We chose to take it down because it was, um, it was potentially harmful. And in speaking with the, uh, chief of police, it was not something that they enjoyed getting calls on often. Where somebody was going around and poking around the whole of your property, and there was buildings that were, uh, dilapidated beyond measure. So, our intent is to use the property as it is ours. Not commercially where anybody can come and go during business hours as they please. It's essentially invite-only with the event that is pre-scheduled, typically many months in advance. And they're allowed to use the property during that time, we are the ones maintaining the property. There isn't, there's plans within the entire venue to have an accessory building, which would be a heated shop. Cold storage for all of the stuff that you need to run the facility, and there are living quarters within that. Um, but to call it a primary residence, that's a little bit of a reach, um, and that would be. I I don't know, I think it would be just the only small point of contention to say primary residence versus having some residence on there. Um, that's doable within the plans that we already have set forth, and again, have worked through with staff to say. That makes sense, right, to have that.
They're not one in the same though.
No.
They're not one in the same, what you're just saying right now, you're trying to spin words, the primary residence is your primary residence. You're saying there will be a residence there, it's our, it's our property, people aren't allowed there, but you're just saying it's a place for. Whomever's managing, whether that's yourself, but it's not a residence, so it's.
Carrotaker.
Basically, caretaker there, when you're there to mow the lawn and you have a place, it it's completely different.
I don't think I'm trying to spin words.
Yeah, you were kind of in the beginning, you were saying it's, it's not really gonna be a primary residence, it's a residence. We're residents, we own it, we're it's our resident facility.
Spinning words is actually not recusing yourself from an ethical standpoint when you're directly impacted by a property and sitting on a commission. I would sit back and say, we own this property, we will use it from a recreational standpoint. You brought up last year, what about hunting season, we'll be hunting it, that's fine, that is our property. The beauty is, is we will be there, our children just happen to be in school at the cathedral system. That's the reason we wouldn't put a primary residence out there, but to say we're gonna be there five days a week. Is pretty much a realistic statement, and it's not spin.
Yeah, I I believe the intent of the rural residential, and, Ken, I appreciate what you're saying, but. The the, I think the original intent on the rural residential about having it your primary residence is business is secondary. You live in your house, yeah, you might have some sort of little home business that you can run out there and and they're all identified. I think that's the intent that we're talking about is, it's your primary residence, the business is secondary to where you live. And that's the intent of the rural residential area with with the business that can be allowed within. The rural residential area, that's my interpretation.
Yeah, I mean, you're not a resident of Saint Joe, I mean, that was kind of one of the comments that was made from the city. That that was, one of their reasons to put that in here was that it aligns with. That it's a residential component, that you're a resident of the city, living in the city. And then having the opportunity to possibly have a business out of your resident.
I share the same zip code as the property.
Can I clarify a few things here, for people get way out aligned with this, uh, resident rural residential? Okay, back in, I don't know, three, four, the order of annexation was, okay. And, uh, Mark will attest to this, the only reason that these areas were designated. Rural residential was to accommodate a different tax on the annexed properties. That's the only reason, there was no way, and the intent of this R R area. Was when the people that owned the R R areas developed it, they would lose that R R status. There was no plan for keeping it totally rare, r- rural residential.
As it's developed, though.
As it developed throughout through the future.
Right. Um, speaking of that, this zoning amendment, you know, this proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance. Doesn't just affect this parcel, it's the entire rural residential district, is there, I mean. You know, typically, when you come forward with a permit, you've got, um, notifications that have to go out to affected residents. And area residents, well, this one, this is tricky to me, because at what point do you have, when you're making a. I mean, I get, sometimes we make modifications to ordinances, like allowing brick versus steel siding. Or clarifying and defining things, but when you start talking about uses. This affects way more people than, I think, it has a potential to affect way more people than what I think are aware of it. Because it's the entire rural residential zoning district that this potentially impacts, regardless of if we have a minimum acreage or we have an arterial. Um, and it's a, it's a use, it's not a, it's not a minor clerical thingy, it's an allowed use, that's.
Well, when when you go for use, I mean, that's what the conditional use is in there for, correct? I mean, it's for the city as well, so the people that sit in the council to say, okay, here's your use. But these are the conditions we stipulate, and then it's their job to say, we wanna do it or we don't wanna do it. I know we can get in the weeds and we can argue back and forth, and I was opposed to it in the beginning for residential. But if you put a conditional use on it, well, now the city has the right to say what they can and they can't do. In the sense of the property in 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 general, so, yeah, that's. That I think that's the biggest change from what I saw from last year is, there's gotta be a conditional use to it, and if they come to resent it. Then the city can put stipulations, and if the stipulations aren't met, then they can't do it. I I mean, I just, I know we can keep going for hours and hours and hours and hours on end, my biggest thing is. When you start putting stipulations, forty acres, this, that, this, that on there, then it gets too convoluted. Which, if they wanna do it, as long as the conditional use is in there, and I'm okay with setbacks, I'm okay with art. What is it, the artillery or arterial streets, right, setbacks, the parking on the resident, everything else. I just say, if the big thing, if you're gonna get rid of, is get rid of the minimum acreage, keep the condition. Setbacks, the parking on the resident, everything else, I just say, if the big thing, if you're gonna get rid of, is get rid of the minimum acreage, keep the conditional use in it. And let the city decide, the council, whether or not they meet the conditional use. That's, that's, that's where I'm at, so get rid of the minimum acreage.
But isn't, i- is an event, a special event facility compatible with. The nature of the parcels in the zoning district?
It doesn't matter if the conditional use says.
Yeah, it does.
But if, if the conditional use permit is put on there that you are living in that twelve acre. Rural residential area and I wanna come do it and I don't meet the conditional use to it, then I can't do it. The biggest thing I think right now is the conditional use permit with what we're saying in the rural residential. Right, cuz we can go back and forth, this person needs to be this, this person needs to be this, this is what I think it should be, this is what I think it should be, this is what you think it should be. Right now, you gotta kind of reel it back in and not be so specific on where we're at and this understanding of if they wanna do it. They have to meet all the conditions of what the city puts in place. And if they can't.
Conservation part.
Right, but if they can't, then you can't do it. Right, I mean, that's, I guess that's my thought. Is, is you can, you can move to amend it, take that part out, we. We put the motion out there and then again, you can agree to disagree and you vote on it and it's positive or negative. And whether or not, then it goes back to the council, and then they also have to understand what they wanna do, it's the same thing as last year, I think the biggest thing, a change from me last year is. Want city and water out there, want our city to grow and expand, but it's gotta do it not like right now, right? It's gotta be developed as we go throughout time here, and it's gonna get developed. I just want you hooked up, city sewer and water, I want it to be, and your plans look great. But if the plans aren't there and the city deems necessary that it needs to be something else in the conditional use, then. That's what that is in place, I think the biggest thing is getting the conditional use permit in there. For me specifically, and taking out the forty because now you're gonna open up a bigger can of worms there.
So, a, a special event occurring, I'm gonna just throw some. Scenario-y type things out there.
But it's scenario.
Well, but it's.
This is a scenario.
But it's, but it's related to the definition of special event facility.
Okay.
And its appropriateness in the rural residential zoning district. Because all of the uses, regardless of whether they're conditional or not, that are listed here. Are consistent with a zoning, with, within the zoning district, with the intent of the district, because they're allowed uses, whether it's through a permit, an interim permit or whatever. Those are all uses consistent with the intent of the rural residential zoning ordinance by the fact that they're in the ordinance. Okay, so, um. Wedding, wedding and revan- weddings, events, corporate things happening in a residential. In a residential zone, three, four nights a week. Traffic coming in, two, three hundred people coming in for these events, give or take, um, traveling down the roads. Mus- music and celebrating at the events, things like that, the additional noise, the additional, you know, the additional people presence, that kinda stuff. Is it consistent, is that use of property consistent with the intent of the rural residential zoning district? I guess that's, to me, that's what it boils down to is. Because I, I, I like the definition that city staff has put together for special event facility, I think that's. That's a d- difficult thing to define, and I believe that city's done a good job of defining that, however, you know, so with that. With that definition, is it an appropriate use in the ru- in, in alignment with the intent for the rural residential district? And I think that's the question that really we need to ask here. Regar- and if we, if we think it is, then, then you talk about, I mean, I don't think anybody's agree- disagreeing that. If it's an acceptable use within the, with the intent of the district, that it should be a conditional use, I think that makes sense if. If we're in agreement that it's a use that is consistent with the intent of the district.
So, you think that definition is, is good and don't change that?
I think the definition's pretty good.
Anybody else?
Well, I'm just curious about the procedure, do you, and, and. Just as a point of clarification, do you vote first on whether you wanna allow the amendment? And, and then if you say, yes, we're gonna allow the amendment to change, to include the event center.
As a conditional use?
Within, within one of the uses that can be, within one of the approved uses within. The rural residential area, then you'd have to come back and define exactly what, what the conditional use, I mean, so I'm just curious about.
Right, so right now, too, we're discussing what we want the amended draft to be. And so the motion would be changing the ordinance, but we as a commission can recommend, and tell me if I'm wrong, Nate. What we want in that ordinance or not, so it can be this definition, it can be on, what we see on page. Yeah, forty-six, taking any of those bullet points out or in. And then you make a motion to clarify, hey, I'm gonna move the motion, this, 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 but. Striking out C and then saying special event needs to be.
So, I, I just wanted to make sure I was clear that your, the first vote is to say, do we wanna include this?
Well, right now, it's just a discussion.
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, so you can, the next one would be literally the motion, but of how we want it as a commission to state. So, you could just move to say, I moved to put it in just as is, and then we take a vote and it could be all no and. Right, one yes, or we move it to say, I would like to see C struck, cuz that's what I would like to see, is the minimum acreage out. And then, or if you think the definition is good enough, unless I'm saying that wrong, but.
I guess. In, to be consistent with, you know, my opinions on this matter when we discussed it last year, I would make a motion at this time to deny. The amendment to the zoning, um, to the zoning ordinance. With the, for the reasons that it is not consistent with the intent of the rural residential zoning district, per the intent of the dis-. Per the intent as stated in the ordinance.
Well, should, shouldn't it be, you just, you make the mo- the motion on here is proposed and then you just deny it?
Would that be what it, is that what we would need to do?
Yes. Is you, you make the motion to propose the ordinance amendment, you know, P.
But I, but I don't wanna amend the ordinance.
Then you vote no.
You can, you can do it both ways, um, so, yeah, you can.
There's some difference between what I'm saying and what you're saying.
We're saying the same thing, it's just you.
I think the intent, but I think the intent of what I'm saying is different than what you're saying. Personally, but so that, anyways, that's the motion that I've made. We have a motion and second. I think if we keep continuing discussion on this, we're gonna talk ourselves in circles, so, um, we have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Wait, can you read the motion back?
Okay. Yes. Um, I guess my motion was to deny the proposed amendment. To the rural residential zoning district ordinance. Regarding the addition of a conditional use.
Yep, with the finding that that request does not meet the intent of the district, essentially, yeah.
So, the, okay, so those in favor? So, and those opposed?
Nay.
So, we have two nays and.
So, was that a five-two that I got? Okay.
Going back to the agenda then. Sorry, I lost my page on the, on the agenda. Old business, item number nine, uh, building material ordinances.
All right, um, wanted to have just some discussion on this item. Uh, this isn't necessarily a huge pressing item, um, but again, it's just a. Step to kind of be more proactive versus reactive, so, um. In one of our meetings that we had in, uh, EDA, so essentially, our district, our B-one district, our B-two district. So, our downtown, our highway and our industrial district has different material standards within those districts. And, um, given that materials have changed a lot significantly. Um, those standards were developed back when the downtown design, um, plan was put in place and that was back in two thousand and eight. Um, so specifically in the downtown district, we've seen more types of like metal finishes in the district. And right now, we limit the metal to like fifteen percent, um, but, uh, the way things are going, uh, is. The metal is, you know, I think the original intent was we didn't want like pole barns and that kinda material in our downtown district. Um, but now, we're seeing siding that's done in metal or steel or that, uh, that you can't necessarily tell that it's metal or steel. Um, so, really, that's the one that kind of arose in, in our minds and from staff review. Was, uh, that material standard in the B-one downtown district, so I wanted to throw that out there, and then also, since we're talking about that. Um, we also have those other standards in our highway district and industrial district. Um, staff necessarily isn't flagging those at, at the moment, um, but again, just wanna have discussion and conversation on. Those standards and how the commission may, may see those standards that are highlighted in the packet and that for you.
And the highlighting in the B-one, and it looks like in the, um. In the light industrial as well, we've got some. Area, um, minimums and maximums or something like that in there, um, I guess I would question those. Whereas, you know, maybe some clarification as to the intent of those, um, item subdivision seven in the. B-one, uh, subdivision seven, item.
It's a G?
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
The not to exceed fifteen percent of the exposed wall area on any two visible sides of the building. That, and then in the light industrial, I think it's item. C, it looks like, okay, so, this is where I struggle a little bit too, is they're just, they're inconsistent in the way that they're. In the way that they're written, um, but there's, you know, less, uh. Pre-finished architectural metal panels, a minimum of twenty-five percent of the exterior finish directly facing the streets, um. I, I don't know, I, maybe that's different because it's, that's the adornment we're talking about there, isn't it, so that is different. Sorry, I should've read it more clearly, more clearly.
Yeah, specifically, the first one that you had mentioned in the B-one downtown, that fifteen percent, that's the exact one that. Staff noticed and has, um, you know, I guess more or less the concern that, um, should we still have a percentage? Tied to that, or should we look at, you know, having more flexibility in that? Um, you may recall, like, when Bad Habit did their expansion, we had that request come forward and, um, had to get that. Approval on that, cuz of that percentage, so.
They've done, there's a lot of really nice things that are being done with architectural metals now, that we've seen out there, I guess I. I'm not opposed to changing that, it's just that how do you? Do you set a higher percentage, or how do you actually determine, you know, what? If you're, if you're allowing the metal, how are you gonna determine what type of metal or what it looks like, or, you know, are we gonna just? Percentage, you know what I mean, rather than just like you said, you're trying to avoid the bullshit look, well. How are you going to, if you allow a certain amount of metal or more metal, how do you prevent that?
Does it, does it do enough by saying utilized for accent and or architectural components? Cuz that's what that paragraph says, I mean, I guess I look at that and say, as an accent. You know, you're already saying it's an accent, so it's not the entire building, I guess would be the way that I would be willing to interpret that.
I would say too, just the pre-finished architectural metal, that's a higher standard of metal. Um, so it's, um, you know, even if there was more than the accent or that, it's, uh. You know, some of the siding in that, for instance, um, you know, it's hard to tell the difference between that and even some of the other materials. Um, cuz it's higher standard metal.
I think it's fine the way it is, if they wanna change it, they can always come and, you know, request, uh, variance. On the requirement, depending upon the look of the building. You know, you, you open it up and pretty soon you're gonna have all your buildings looking like pole barns. You're gonna have, you know, I mean, if you go through some of these small towns throughout Minnesota, you know, a lot of them are like that.
Yeah, I agree, I, it's, it's good, and, and again, if you have people that want more, just like Bad Habit did. They come in and they actually show you what metal they were using, this is actually what we're using. Not as opposed to, now you up the percentage or anything else, and now they can just put whatever they want on it, but.
I mean, I do appreciate staff's, I, I, I appreciate staff's desire to be proactive, but I think you're right, I think it, it, the way it's written affords. Enough flexibility for the city to. Have, maintain some control over what things look like in the, in the city.
And then you're allowing each certain business to come in to say, well, this is what we would like to do, what are your thoughts, and then show, like. They showed you the plans, this is what we're at, instead of just doing this.
Yeah, I don't know that we need to change it.
Good to see before you, you, you let it wide open like that.
I mean, it, it's not like it's something that's come up at, with every building that's come in, or, you know, every application that's come in, whereas. You know, when we looked at rental ordinances, it was like, that was every meeting dealt with rental issues, it's, this isn't one of those things. I guess.
Yep. Yeah, we definitely don't have like a quantity, um, part of it too is just, you know, we're seeing reinvestment and all that, and. So, I just wanted to bring it up for discussion.
I mean, I think in general, our ordinance does a pretty good job of having good-looking buildings in the city of Saint Joe, overall. So, do you, you don't have any, I mean, I think in general, then our, our thought is, there's really no need to change it, is what we're kind of. Saying, is, is kind of our general idea.
Okay, sounds good, sounds like that's a consensus.
And then, where are we, um. So, then, any other business?
Yeah, so I have a list of different updates on here. You know, I always do, so, uh, the apartments that we had mentioned a few months back. To the Joe Town Apartments that are being built off College Avenue, um, those, you might have seen some ground moving and stuff like that. The permits have been issued for that, uh, they did obtain site plan review, so, uh, the first phase is, uh, fifty units and the second phase is just. South of fifty units, um, so just about less than a hundred units for that project. We continue to see significant increase in inquiry on our industrial park, which is very exciting. Of course, we had the, um, item earlier this evening, uh, but we're also seeing some activity on some of the other lots out there in request. Um, so that's really good to see. We, um, are having a joint, you might have seen an email I sent off, we're having a joint board and council meeting on. Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, starting at five o'clock. So, if you can attend that, please do, it's a great opportunity, kinda just provide. Um, the ability to know others and see others that are involved in the city, from the EDA to the CVB, to other commissions and that. And then also, um, we'll probably be talking a little bit, or give a synopsis of just what the planning commission's been doing and some of the activities that we've seen. Throughout the, the year. The JR mobile site, so that is the, um, gas station off Second Avenue. Um, and, uh, Minnesota Street, so that one, if you recall, um, we were in some action to get the building. Either demoed or, um, fixed up, so the council did extend, so there was a deadline for the end of March. To get that building demolished, uh, but the council did extend that to, um, it's either April twenty-sixth or thirtieth. Um, so that, that is coming up in that, um, but that's where we're at with that, they did grant a thirty-day extension. And then the last one that I have is, I will be on FMLA for about six weeks, it can happen anytime from now. To the end of April, so, um, I'll have a better idea in probably about four days or so if we'll have any applications that come in. For next month, um, there's a chance I may still attend the meeting if it's, um, a land use application, otherwise, we are. Um, handling stuff internally and also through, um, our engineer, SCH. Um, so, yeah, I'll keep everyone posted and thanks for, um, the ones that I had a false alarm earlier this morning, or this, today. So, thanks for, um, Gina and Karmie for helping and responding in that, so. I think that's all I have for now, any questions on other things? I think that's all I have for now. Any questions on other things going on or or that?
Good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
Um I guess with that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion second, pose or in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.